Good evening, I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board meeting, September 17th, 2018, at 7:20 at the Deerfield Town Hall. Our agenda tonight is to review minutes of previous meetings, review the mail, take some public comment, and then we'll open the public hearing, which is a continued hearing on a site plan review submitted by SWCA on behalf of Hexagon Energy LLC for the development of a solar facility along Set Right Road on properties owned by Chester Ostowski. Then after that, we go to any other business not reasonably anticipated. We set a date for the next meeting, and we adjourn. We do have one request for comment from the ZBA that we can do at the end. So, our last meeting was just last week. We don't have the minutes ready, so we will do them next meeting. The mail, we did last week. It doesn't look like there's anything new. Public comment, is there anything that is not on tonight's agenda that someone has a quick comment or question for the planning board? Okay, then let's open the public hearing. I have to, I want to read the announcement. Let's see. There should be a box with it, actually. Usually the newspaper, there should be the public news. So this is a continuation of a public hearing from August 20th, pursuant to Sections 5400 and 2200 of Deerfield zoning bylaws to review plans, including site plan, stormwater, and special permit submitted by SWCA Environmental Consultants on behalf of Hexagon Energy LLC for the development of a property along Set Right Road. Assessors map 142, lots 20 and 22, for two megawatt AC, which is the same as a 2.62 megawatt DC solar array on properties currently owned and farmed by Chester Ostowski. Copies of the site plan have been available in the town hall during normal business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated, which is here. So that was posted properly. Letters were sent out to a butters, and we held one hearing, and we continued it tonight. So, if I could ask the applicants to come forward, what we'd like to do is just get an update on what's occurred since the last meeting, and then we'll open it up to the public for public comment. I should have said earlier, we do have a quorum at the planning board. Max, Roger, Rachel, and myself, John Waite, for seven, so we can open the hearing. The three members send their regrets.
Are there any limitations on voting in the process?
Apparently there is. In particular, for special permits, that you need a supermajority of the planning board. So, we're still learning this, but if planning board members miss a meeting, they can review the material on, these are all taped, so you can watch the tape, or, and/or, I believe, you can go over all the materials that were discussed and get up to speed, and then they're able to vote, so.
So they can view outside of this contract?
They would view that outside of it. I'm not sure what the test is to, that they have seen all the material and everything?
They have to sign a form certifying.
All right.
And then would the actual vote would happen at another meeting?
And then the vote would have to happen when they're all here, when we have five, so, tonight, I guess we wouldn't be able to vote on the special permit.
Sure. It's a supermajority.
Supermajority is five out of, five out of seven.
Two-thirds of the board over five.
Is that like town meeting bylaws, or?
Let me provide you the details.
Oh yeah, she brought this up, but state law, I guess.
I apologize, I've been speaking without the microphone, so what?
Well, we just opened the meeting.
I know.
This is Pat Smith, our technical person from the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, thanks.
Thank you. So the rule that Chairman Waite has been referring to is called the Mullen Rule. It's pursuant to Chapter 39, Section 23D of the state statutes. And it provides the opportunity for someone who has missed a meeting to catch up by watching an official video or reading an official transcript, not just the minutes. They don't suffice. And then reviewing all of the materials that have been presented. So, any number of people can do up to one meeting in order to constitute that supermajority. You need, in order for a special permit to be approved, it must be voted in favor by five members of the board. So that's why it's important that you have enough people there, because otherwise you can't possibly even get that vote. So, we will, you know, we can, on this, and as on other projects, we can keep track of who's at meetings, so that we can know if there's any concern to be addressed in that regard.
And so, would you close the meeting, potentially, and vote at a later time, or how would that work? Would we come back, open up public comment again, and then vote?
That's how we tend to do it, is continue the public hearing.
Got it.
Just in case new information came up, I suppose we could close it and let the missing members catch up, and then just come back for a vote.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll see how it goes, I think.
Sure.
And if in fact you get to the point where it is not possible for five members to vote, then it comes to the point where it's in the interest of the applicant to go ahead and withdraw it, because the only thing they can do is vote against it, and then start the process again. And typically, if that has to happen, a town will waive the fees, so you don't have to pay a second round of fees or whatnot. But those are, you know, hopefully we wouldn't get to that extreme circumstance, but that would be, that would be the result that would serve everyone's interest.
Okay.
I can, I can, excellent.
And just to confirm, you not only need five voters, you need five yes votes.
Right. To approve a special permit requires a supermajority.
So at the August 20th, our last meeting, six of us were here, and four of the same six are here again, so it's really just.
I knew that.
No, you were here.
I wasn't here.
For August 20th?
I don't.
For the Set Right Road one?
I wasn't here.
No.
Check to.
But I did see the tape.
All right.
There was five.
What's that?
There was five.
All right, so we got the.
You tested me, weren't you?
He's tested.
It's for a yes vote.
We had approved the minutes.
So Roger, we can get you a form, so that you can certify at that effect, and that can go on the file, and that will then be right to proceed.
All right, so we have a 10-acre, two-megawatt solar project on Set Right Road. The last meeting, we had, we heard a little bit about it, and then we had a lot of questions from residents about setbacks and stormwater, and visibility of it, the height of it, things like that. And there were some, you guys, I think, were making some decisions even at that time, but now we're back, you've got some revised plans, I think.
Correct.
So why don't you give us an overview of where you're at, if you could just introduce yourselves and give us an update?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Scott Reamer. I am a Development Manager with Hexagon Energy here, working on Old Frontier Solar III. Since the last planning board meeting, several questions came up, and so we went back and wanted to address those and be able to provide some insight and answers to what those questions were, and address what we feel would be some of the benefits to the town of the project. One clarifying point I wanted to make very quickly is in the Greenfield recorder, there was a small but somewhat significant statement that this was going to sit on 50 acres, which is entirely out of line with the bylaw. The bylaw requires a maximum size of 10 acres, so this will be on less than 10 acres. And below, it'll be 2.0 megawatts AC, which is also what the bylaw is written to allow, not 2.2 megawatts AC. So just wanted to clarify that really quickly.
I did comment to the recorder about that. I don't know if they put a correction in there. But we have a new reporter who's much better than the last guy, so. I just want to make friends with these reporters.
Sure you are, you're terrific.
So I just wanted to go through real quick and give a little bit of an update of some answers to some of the questions that were raised to everybody, and then let Kevin talk a little bit about some of the stormwater. But some of the benefits that we see the Old Frontier Solar III project providing to the town is, first off, and this is a standard thing that gets said, but it will be enough renewable local electricity produced to power approximately 300 homes in the region. There will be, through pilot agreements and real estate taxes and excess income of $500,000 or more to the town over the 20-year life of the project. So we're nailing down those numbers exactly with the Board of Assessors right now, but it will be a minimum of $500,000. And so that will be a financial benefit.
Unless they counter with less, which we don't anticipate.
Reliable income to the landowner, who's a longtime local resident of the community, and also to his family, providing some retirement income for him and allowing him to hang on to the property. Improved groundwater infiltration in that area based on the soil stabilizing effect of our planter mix that we're going to be placing around it. We won't be putting gravel or even just plain grass. We'll be planting a pollinator-friendly planter mix to basically help the soil absorption improve and increase, and help mitigate some of the runoff in that area. Another benefit of that is the fostering of bee culture in the area, which should ideally help improve the agricultural production in the area. So that's another one, and then increased agricultural yield. One of the things that came up last time was this height, and I don't know exactly, it was a slip, I believe, that our original application said these would be 10 to 12 feet above the ground, that that's entirely wrong. At a maximum height, they will be eight foot above mean ground level. And what I mean by maximum height is not that they'll be consistently eight feet above ground level. These will be on a single-axis tracker, which I'll talk about more in a little bit. But throughout the day, it'll track the sun from east to west. And when I say a maximum of eight feet, I mean that at its zenith, or at its most westward leaning, or most eastward leaning height, that the tip will be below eight feet. So, you know, on average height, when they're flat, they'll be closer to six feet instead of eight. Yeah, similar project with using a single-axis tracker, because there's a little bit of question around it that most of the Massachusetts projects that have been built are on a fixed tilt system, so anything you see driving around will be fixed tilt. But we provided a profile of a project that some of our members had worked on in Summers, Connecticut, just south of here, for a five-megawatt project or 4.999 megawatt project. They successfully implemented the single-axis trackers in the region. And so we provided an industry journal coverage of that project in our updated application to go through that. We also provided an independent analysis that was conducted across five states. One of the questions that was asked was about the impact on real estate values in the area. This analysis found that in rural residential areas, which is what this parcel is zoned as, rural agricultural area, there was no significant impact on property values. And so we can talk through that a little bit more, but we provided the whole report. It uses a match pair analysis to look at projects that were built near houses, or houses that were near projects that hadn't been built, and houses that hadn't been near projects, and compares the values over time, and shows no noticeable impact on those. Some questions had just come up about who we were as a company. So we provided our formal statement of qualifications as well. I have a few extra copies here that I'd be happy to show, but just as a little bit of a background, we've, our members have developed over 7,000 megawatts of energy projects across over 17 states, and that's about, representing about $1.5 billion of investment. However that said, we really pride ourselves and try to get involved on a local level and hear what the desires and needs of the community are, so that we're not just, you know, just coming in from outside with no idea of what's going on. And we're working towards that, but I have the statement of qualifications here. We also put together a sightline analysis for the project. So standing at about 33 Set Right Road, if you were a six-foot individual looking, and with the screening buffer, which will show a visualization of this momentarily, the screening buffer will block the project from sight. And the project is well over 1,000 feet away from the nearest residences, closer to, from 33 Set Right, it's 1,100 feet, and that's the forward edge of it, not the rear end. By the end of it, it's about half a mile away, approximately. We provided an updated stormwater report as well that shows that this is a low-impact development, Site Design Credit II project, that should meet all of the town's requirements, and so that's included in there as well. We'll talk through that a little bit. And then we revised our plan to show buried power lines across the main set of the field, with the hope of continuing to be able to run, basically shooting eastward from Set Right Road, being able to run above ground there, but we can talk about that to consider burying all those lines as well. And then another thing that came up was how many truck trips were going to be involved in this project. We estimate, depending on the size of the truck, approximately total for the whole project, 60 to 70 truckloads throughout the whole construction process, and then it'll be about one truck trip per month, and not even a large truck at that point, to maintain it throughout the life. So we don't anticipate a significant amount of traffic after the initial construction. And even there, that'll be spaced out over several days, rather than everything happening at once.
Sorry, 60 to 70, total?
Total, yes ma'am.
Yeah, and just so you can understand how that's phased in terms of building the access road, so you'd have gravel trucks coming in for about a week, so you're looking at maybe eight to 10 trucks per day, so nothing that would really impact, you know, normal traffic flows on Set Right Road. And then the remainder of the trucks, about 20 truckloads, will be delivering materials in phases over the three-to-six-month build period, so not a lot of traffic at all.
Three to six months?
Yes, three to six months.
But the access road, you're going to upgrade it though?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That will be the majority of the truckloads, will be gravel from the local quarry to upgrade the roadway to allow, you know, consistent access to it. Another thing that did come up was the reflection, reflective nature of the panels. We provided a report that shows it's less than 2% of sunlight that hits them on the panels. The goal here is not to reflect light, that's lost energy. The goal is to absorb them, absorb as much as they can. They have an anti-reflective coating placed on them, and stippled glass to diffring their reflection. I think one of the most telling pieces of that is that airports around the country have these installed right around them to, they're not blinding pilots landing planes. So, but we did provide a formal statement on that as well. Thank you for hearing us tonight. With that, I think I'd like to let Kevin talk.
Quickly, we talked about, this was proposed on two lots.
Mm-hmm, oh yes.
What about the A&R?
We did submit an A&R to you guys last Monday.
So that's what this is?
To just seek to dissolve the two lots into one. And you should have the application for that.
Good, thank you.
If no immediate questions, I'll let Kevin talk about the stormwater, but happy to take some initial questions now.
No, keep going.
Pretty brief. There's a full write-up in there now, the document, existing and proposed conditions, the site.
You want to take the mic?
And as we had talked a little bit about before, the stormwater management system really is the ground cover that's going to be implemented on the site after it's constructed, and the deep root system of that vegetation. And we would expect that some of the concerns that were raised about off-site drainage that runs through there would probably be improved with a more cohesive ground cover that's there all year, as opposed to an ag crop.
So I'm just looking, you'd say what specifically the vegetation is you're putting down?
It's in the plant set on sheet three.
Yeah, towards the back of the plant set, there's a seed list.
So it's in the stormwater, or it's in the?
I'll tell you in just a second. Yes, Scott had it, sheet 3.0.
The bottom right corner, sheet 3.0.
And then to go along with the planting discussion, we, as Scott said, we did do a sightline analysis, and we've added screening to the west side of the project, outside the fence line.
Which consists of eastern rights eareds and western rights eareds, that would be planted at a height of 40 to 50 feet and very mature, and that's documented on sheet 3.0 as well.
3.0 as well?
Yes, ma'am.
How tall were those trees, Ken?
15 to 20 feet. Yeah, immature, yeah.
There'll be setbacks and not past the shade on the project, but you need to provide screenings.
I knew there was some concern on how high it is.
Yeah, no greater than 15 to 20 feet.
Chris, I've heard of this grass, like the ground cover, so you can absorb more water, and I'm surprised nobody else has used that in other projects.
I think it's being fairly widely used at this point. I know a few projects in New York that have gotten some publicity about it. Pretty much every job we work on here in Massachusetts, that's what we're calling for.
So what makes this different from any other grass?
Well, if you take like a turf lawn, for example, that's really only going to have a root structure that goes in a few inches. And this stuff, after it sets up for a few years, will be down several feet.
So where does waterfall the root system down, or?
Yeah, yeah, the plants use most of it, and then what they don't use just soaks down into the deep, you know, the deep pores that it's making.
So can you, why don't you just show us, everybody actually on TV and in the audience, where you're planting the trees?
Where the screening is?
Yeah.
It's basically along the whole west side.
So just show us where the Set Right Road is, I guess.
Set Right's out here. This is still showing the two parcels until they're officially combined here on the locust. So then the project starts in this area here. So there's that property line, and then we're proposing screening all down this west side, outside of the chain of fence.
And the north and south side, there's nothing going on there, so.
We hadn't proposed anything, because we don't think there's a concern for visual issues there, as far as, you know, this is all ag lands in the north, and then it turns into trees at the south.
There are neighbors along that plain road, no?
Well, the north side.
Pretty far away.
West, I think it's going to cut down.
Cut their view side off.
Yeah, I don't know if they, you know.
It's pretty far.
It is a long way.
On 116, we're talking about?
No, the road on the north side.
Keep going.
Yeah, it's up a little ways. There should be some natural topographical screening there as well. And it may also be worth noting that with the cover crop of about one and a half feet in the ground, sorry, the cover crop of about one and a half feet in the ground, which most of the year there will be a crop, the topography does screen, if not the entirety, almost the entirety of the project. From standing on Set Right Road, it cannot be seen. We took a video to confirm it and see it. Stood out there with my hand up in the field waving.
When you say cover crop, cover crop that's on your property, under this property that you're, or other people's property?
On the piece of property between the projects. So Mr. Bowman lives, not here, he lives in New York, but he owns a property between Set Right Road and Mr. Ostrowski's property, and it's farmed agriculturally. And when there's a crop in the ground, it grows, you know, about a couple of feet high. And that with an existing natural berm does provide a significant amount of screening as well. That's not, you know, something to bank on, but it's the natural condition as it is right now.
There's a lot of different cover crops.
Yeah.
And the, another emergency vehicle, so you're going to, you're going to upgrade this road, so fire trucks could come in there?
Yeah.
And we did speak with the Department of Public Works, Kevin Scarborough, and he said he had no problem keeping the portion of Set Right Road to the access road clear throughout the year. I spoke with him last week, and he said he was happy to do that. And then we will, as part of our operations.
Say that again, so who's?
Kevin Scarborough, the superintendent at DPW.
Yeah.
He said he saw no problem maintaining that as a public way to keep access there. And then as part of our standard operations and maintenance plan for the project, we'll keep the site access open as necessary to be able to access it throughout the year. It'll be, it's quiet, so that was another question that had come up, is noise level. It will be below 60, all of the pieces are below 60 decibels and standing one meter outside of the fence line will be no louder than standard ambient.
Standard ambient noise.
I actually have a letter, we requested comments from all the public officials and departments, and I do have one from Director of Public Works. I have reviewed the plan. DPW should be notified of roadway upgrades. Driveway permit is required. Any differences on hydrology, DPW should be notified. I think that's all I have at this point. All right, all right, is that good?
The Select Board also, we attended a meeting where they provided comment on this as well, and I don't know if they sent a note yet or not to you guys, but.
Do you have another folder for this, or?
Yeah, I don't think we do have one.
They referenced the height.
It'll be in there.
I know, that was the only one that was in here.
I don't think, no, I don't think we have it yet.
Okay.
Oh, it's that one, put me somewhere in there. 21st, 22nd? It was 22nd.
22nd, yeah.
This is all butters. Oh, blah 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 line.
From the police chief, no issues. File that. All right, I'd like to, this is.
But nothing from, nothing from.
Any other quick questions here, or we'll open it up to the public?
Oh yeah, we can show the sightline analysis really quickly.
Actually, yeah, and I saw that that's in here.
It's the last sheet. Oh wait, no, it's the third, the last sheet, actually.
Yeah, sheet five.
Because the last two are the A&R sheets. It's a pretty long stretch, so it's kind of hard to see what's happening on the topo level there. But on the far left side are the houses along Set Right Road, and then there's a sightline drawn straight across, shown from a six-foot individual where one would stand. And then the tree buffer screening is shown. It blocks the view of the panels. They will eventually grow to block the entirety of the, even the rear side, at about 14 feet. When they hit a height of 14 feet, the entire length will be completely screened.
So I, so behind them, then behind all the panels is more woods, more trees?
More woods, yes, sir.
Would the screening trees you have there, would they get up to that height?
The height of the rear trees in the back? No, those trees are 70 to 80 foot tall. These will grow probably about 20 feet tall.
Because then I remember there was a question about, then it's the view, because then you got hills and mountains beyond that, so the screening trees wouldn't block that view?
No, no, no. It's kind of a perfect height, actually.
All right. So I'd like to open this up to public comment and questions, and we have a, I've been told that this mic up here is on, and we do appreciate it if people would come up, state their name, and talk into the mic, not just for tonight's, for the audience, but also, like I say, it's on TV too, so. Do we have a sign up?
No.
Is the one going around? All right, so I think people can just come up and talk. It won't get out of control, hopefully. Anybody like to come up?
Good evening, David Decision. I'm a resident of thirty-three set right road, and I appreciate the, the members of the, the company coming up with some of the answers, but as usual, there's lies, damn lies, and then solar panel farm proposals. And this line of sight is, it couldn't be more misleading to the ground truth. The line of sight may be from six feet from somebody standing on set right road, but myself and my neighbors, we don't live at six feet. We have a couple of steps that go into the house. Our homes are built up. We have large picture windows that have a line of sight that's much higher than six feet. The four last homes on that street are two-story homes. So we have that line of sight from our bedrooms that are between eighteen and twenty feet. So this is a little disingenuous to come in here and say that a person walking down the road may not see or be in the line of sight. That, that is absolutely correct, but it's disingenuous to the people who live there. That line of sight is much different than the six feet height. And to shoot that line and say, oh, we've got it covered, is misleading to this board. Because those houses are not built at the six foot level that these folks are talking about. And so you need, you need to understand, not be fooled by, by that, by that, that study and that proposal. There are four two-story homes that are but this property. And this line of sight is not.
Just to be clear, they told us that at six feet.
At six feet, walking on set right road, right. But I want to, but I want you to know that you have to, and I'm taking you to the next step. The next step is what they didn't tell you is.
But what they said, I don't, is true, I think, is it? You're not arguing that.
I'm not arguing with the fact that from the line of sight is six feet. What I'm saying is, we don't live at six feet. We live above that.
Okay, but they just said about the six feet. So being disingenuous, I'm not sure, they just said six feet.
It is self-serving, Mr. Wade. It's self-serving.
No, you're, now you're telling us that from fifteen feet is different. That's what we want to hear.
Their, their presentation is completely self-serving and ignores the realities of the people who live on that street.
That's why we have public hearings. Thank you.
And I also didn't hear the question, I didn't hear the, when they talked about the vegetation, I heard just fifteen foot trees. I didn't hear what type of trees they are and what, how big they'll be when they are initially planted.
I, I mentioned it, if they're.
I just couldn't hear you because it was hard to hear.
Eastern red cedars and western red cedars, they'll be planted four to six feet, and then they'll grow from there.
Yep, four to six feet apart, spacing of four to six feet high.
Four to six feet high.
So you have a four to six feet proposal for a, a visual sight buffer that is going to cover something that's eight feet. So I don't know what the great growth rate of these, this barrier is, but we're looking at a few years before we even achieve a, a even line of sight blocking out and becoming a barrier to this. So that's not, that's not, that is going to have an immediate impact on our line of sight and, and the character and nature of the neighborhood. So I, I don't think that, well, but thank you. Also too, the, the land that is across the street to the west of set right road that is undeveloped, it is currently used as agricultural land. But that's because the owner has decided to use it as agricultural land. Those are at least three, or if not four, buildable lots that have residential potential. So it's not just simply agriculture. They're not under sixty-one A, they're not protected in any way, shape, or form. Those are buildable housing lots that are, that have the necessary frontage, that they have been perked, and they can be built on. So it's, to characterize that lot as simply an agricultural lot is also a little bit misleading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Jericho?
Yeah.
I think I need you to sign in. Are you on this?
I didn't sign in.
Yeah.
Tony Martino, thirty-nine set right road. Just to expand on what Mr. Decision said about the sightlines, standing in the middle of set right road this evening on the way out, you, you can see every inch of that field all the way down to the trees. So I'm not sure where these sightlines came from, but from the road, and it's, I don't know if you have measurements there, but it's quite a drop. It's got to be at least probably a fifteen to twenty foot drop from set right road down to where these are going to be built. And I'm no engineer, but if they're, I'm not sure if they're bringing in Phil to build these, or we're just going to, I don't know. We're going to put them in the ground right at ground level where they're at right now. You're going to have a six, six foot tree that's going to grow up to fifteen feet, which is going to put you at the level of set right road. So they're going to block the first few rows of solar panels, yes. But you're going to be able to see over those and see all the way down, is my understanding. Again, I'm no engineer, but just from what they show there, the, the level of the road is, is at the height of the solar panels. And you can see that nine months a year, all the way down. Not to mention the people that live on Sawmill Plain Road, who you'll probably be hearing from, as well as the people who live on Boydin or Plain Road, Plain Road West, who are significantly higher, and will be able to see the entire project with a, with a tree that even grows to fifteen feet year, fifteen feet tall over time. That's one of my questions or comments, I guess. And I, I just don't understand the, so this is sixty to seventy truck trips, including everything?
Yeah.
And how many solar panels is it?
It's about seven thousand.
How many fit on a truck?
Quite a few.
Quite a few?
Yeah, that was drawn from our manufacturer's specs that they, they gave us.
It just seems like a huge number on a small number of trucks.
They're pretty thin, you know, they're not that thick. They stack pretty high.
So that's, that's the screening buffer, which is not going to screen. You're going to be able to see, especially the back of that solar farm and facility. It's not a farm, it's, it's a facility. It's an industrial facility, industrial panels in the middle of farm fields, which have been farmed in Deerfield for, I'm not even sure how many years, but numerous years. And there's not much farm field left. When I bought my house, I didn't buy my house because it was a nice house. I bought my house because of the location. And then I upgraded my house afterwards. But it's the location that people buy, as they say, location, location, location. It will affect home prices. It's a market, so it's whatever somebody's willing to pay you for your location. If your location is staring at a solar facility, it's going to be less. And this is one parcel of land in a huge area of farm fields. I'm not even sure how many hundreds of acres. Other than the North Meadows, it's the largest area of farmland in Deerfield. Mr. David touched on it earlier, at the earlier meeting. It's a slippery slope because we're going to start by one parcel. And I get it, it's ten acres, not a heck of a lot of land. But then you have another parcel. And can you put ten acres of solar panels on that parcel? And then you get a next parcel. Well, you just put it on one, so you got to put it on this one. And pretty soon you don't have any farmland. All you have is a solar, an enormous solar facility in that area. And that's frightening. And not just because I live there, but it's just, it's sad that we're not looking forward over the long term. And when I say long term, like in the next hundred years. Are we going to fill everything with things that we make? Or are we going to leave some land preserved? And this is a huge area of farmland. And you guys have an awesome responsibility, and I don't envy you one bit. But it frightens me as to how far this is going to go. That's all I have for now.
Peter Coffin, twenty-five set right road. And I'm probably going to be the one most affected by the sightline because my house is right on the corner and it slopes away from set right road. So I have the southernmost view from there. And just to recap what Tony said, I mean, we've been in our house for twenty-five years. And about fifteen, eighteen years ago, we made a significant investment because of the neighborhood, because of the views, everything. And now, yeah, it's going to be years before those trees, which don't fit in with the other trees in the neighborhood, are able to cover anything. And I'm probably still going to be able to see the back of those panels from, from my yard. So I'd hate to see perfectly good farmland be taken out of production, like Tony said. Yeah, farmland is dwindling. We all need food. So, you know, and if that's the second largest parcel of farmland in town, I'd be ashamed to see that, you know, taken out of production, you know, for the good of humanity. So I just wanted to state that, you know, I agree with my neighbors in that, you know. It's going to affect the view, it's going to affect, you know, the value of our homes. And it's just not a good place for a project like this. Thank you.
I am, I am, I am.
Todd?
Burns.
Set right? Yep.
So just had a few follow-up questions. One of the big things last time was the wires. I think we talked about being, were they going to be above ground, below ground? I heard some mention of it, I think, earlier, but it wasn't clear to me exactly what was said. Do we have written agreement that these are going to be buried lines?
We had changed the plans to have them run underground across the, across the agricultural field and then along the, the eastern part, shutting out from set right above ground, but, but we can, we can bury them and agree to bury the whole thing and make sure that they're all buried.
At the last meeting, I thought we had asked for the revised plans to have buried.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll make a quick change so that they're completely buried.
So the revised plans do not have that yet, but they will.
It has the main portion of it buried, but we'll make sure that it has the whole, the whole section buried.
So my house at thirty-one set right will not have wires?
No.
Okay.
Except where, except where they exist above ground already.
They don't exist. They're down, they're down on the, coming up the street, but they don't exist.
There's a single pole at the end of set right. That's, that's the only place there will be a pole. We won't add more poles.
So we'll just have the wires come out of the ground and, and connect in.
On that pole, connect to the pole.
All right. And then I think in the other meeting also, we asked for pictures to clarify what the panels would look like.
We provided those in this report. It's in here, it's on page four. Page four, yeah.
We have a couple extra reports if you want to, we can pass them around. Because there are.
Public records.
Bunch of, bunch of pictures in there that are helpful.
And then on page seven, there's a, well, we won't be using those lines above ground anyway, so it doesn't matter.
So then my other question, I guess, is still around the access road. And then there was a conversation, I think, with the superintendent regarding access to that. So just to clarify, the town is assuming now that they're going to plow from the end of paved set right road throughout to this access road? Is that? Because that's a, that is a rutted dirt road that would be really interesting to plow.
He, he did agree to do that, but on the condition that, that we upgrade the, the road to make it accessible and, and easy to get on and remove the ruts. That's what the.
As far as your section, as far as your access road?
So not, not our, so once the set right road runs north and our access road would shut off.
And that's where you would stop?
Exactly, so we would be responsible for, for our access road, but.
And that's what Kevin's calling the driveway? When he says you need a driveway permit, that's.
Yeah.
That'll be the driveway. It's like a farm road right now, but that would be the driveway.
Yeah.
No, the driveway is the access road. So the road north-south is a public way right now, set right road. Don't tell my husband, but I drove on it and I'm very sorry that I.
Right, right. He won't find out.
Sorry, honey. But anyway, so that's the one.
So then the way to turn off of that is.
Yes, that's the driveway that.
Yeah, right. And we'll reinforce the, the section between the driveway and the paved portion of, of set right road to make it accessible and easily accessed and clean and clear.
Yeah, we're not asking for our access road to be paved, yeah, yeah.
Where, where did you, the last meeting, you said that usually the town used to stop plowing there and it just.
Yeah, the town stops at the paved end of set right road. And then between Plain Road and set right is nothing but rutted farm roads.
Yeah.
But it's a public access.
It's public access, right, but, but I just want to make sure we're thinking about what we have to do to get to this access road.
Yeah. I, I did specifically talk about that with the superintendent at DPW, and he had no, no problem with it.
So you paved that portion of set right road that goes off your driveway or access road, or is that just going to be gravel?
The plan was to gravel it, reinforce it and gravell it.
So you'll gravel it once. Who's going to maintain that? The town, will that have to maintain that road?
That, that's, I'm concerned.
I suppose, since it's a public access road.
But they don't now?
Nope.
No. So I, I don't think, I don't see why the town would change doing more than it does now.
Yeah.
So that's.
How's it going to access it?
Well, that's their, that's kind of their problem more than the town's.
Yeah, we, I mean, we, so part of our operations and maintenance plan, we contract locally for that. And so to the extent there needs to be upgrades made, if site access becomes an issue, that's, you know, that's all part of that contract, yeah.
We just want to make sure emergency vehicles can get in there, so.
Yes, yeah, for sure, yeah.
You have to do what you have to do.
Yeah, exactly.
So in order to maintain the upgrade, upgrade, that's going to be part of your problem, your plan, I would think.
Yes, yeah.
So that's something we ought to consider.
So will that be part of a revised plan, or how is, how is that getting?
I think it's written into the operations and maintenance plan in the current application.
Is that, that should be in your erosion control and site clearing? I mean, that's part of the, the whole construction process, right?
Yeah, we showed the, the length that we're proposing to improve on that.
I think it's on sheet one.
All right, all right, so this is where it ends, and I'm going to do that, and then I'll. They got six inch gravel added to existing dirt road, gravel access road, ten inch minimum from property line.
So how many feet from like the edge of pavement, existing pavement here, access road, how many feet is that in front of the tree?
Got some numbers, is that four hundred and thirteen?
Fourteen feet.
Feet.
Which one, which number is that?
Next one.
Two?
Two, two is correct.
Yeah, I know, but it's part that the town eventually will be.
Okay, go. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then it's also, page two here has the point of interconnectedness.
Right. So that is the part that we're looking at two.
Okay.
And the pole at the end of Set Right, that's still showing?
Yeah, and we'll change that to show that that's all buried.
Okay.
The whole thing up to that pole on Set Right.
All right, good point. So, all right, so just bringing up again the sightlines, you know, concerned about these trees being four feet, six feet against an eight-foot panel, how long is it going to take before our quality of life is restored? You know, we're putting these things in, and it's going to be a long time before those trees get up and block it. So I'm just going to, you know, as far as a community project, and is there a value for the community? And is it a good, you know, positive experience for the community? We have a sightline that's a concern. We have power lines that were supposed to be buried in the revised project, they're not buried yet. And we have this access road that it seems like the town is going to assume some sort of liability accessing too. So not the access road itself, but we're going to be taking on some sort of liability for this road eventually, right? It's not a road that we have any root reason for. So just in totality, there's a lot of reasons here that this does not add up to a quality community project that's adding value rather than taking away. So.
Thank you.
As long as I know your name, that will help.
James Wake, this is all I'll tell you about.
Thank you. Save you a few steps.
So as somebody who just found out about this literally hour-plus ago, could you explain to me what in a butter constitutes?
Shared property line.
Are we talking 300 feet or?
300.
300 feet.
So we've talked about, somebody who's just come in, you've talked about line of sight, and you're really harping on line of sight. If I just opened this book and I only had a couple of minutes to look at, if you look at page five, we moved to this community a couple of years ago because it's a wonderful community. The sense of camaraderie is amazing. Every time we have visitors that come from out of states, first thing we do is bring them to Sugarloaf. And look down off of Sugarloaf and you enjoy the valley. You see the valley. It's in all these commercials for all these banks. You look at page five, does that look appealing to you in the book?
I'm not sure if that's, there's a lot of different photos in here, we have to make.
It's a summer.
Yeah, this is a different, it's not.
Or it says impact on property values?
Okay, but that's not the project that they're designing.
But that's an example that they're providing us with, correct?
It's a much larger project than what we're talking about.
It is. So I look at that line of sight that you have over there. Granted, I may not be close enough to be impacted, but every morning when I get up, I'm not at six feet, I'm probably 40 feet or above. Looking out our back deck, we have a beautiful view of Mount Toby and Mount Sugarloaf. We love it. And I can see those fields. There's black walnuts down there, there's a barn down there, I can see them. It changes throughout the year. I don't want to look at this. I'm just telling you honestly, I don't know the proper terminology, the verbiage, but that's disgusting. My house has a beautiful view. We're lucky to be here. This is going to drastically change the value of the property where I live. My neighbor, who's an elderly lady who contributed to this community for years, her name's Betty Barker, they raised money out of their own pockets to buy the land behind our house to keep it for farms only. She was upset to the point of tears today when she found out that this was going to go in there. It's not farming. You're harnessing energy from the sun. Farming is providing food that benefits families every day. And then the other question I have is, could you explain to me how this is helpful for you, your words, for bees, for good environment?
Sure. I'd be happy to respond to that.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned pollinated, you know, pollinator, so you meant.
Yeah, and we attached a study on this. You know, it's been mentioned how much farmland is here, and I love that respect, that this is not a permanent project, it's going to stay there, it's a 20-year lifespan for what it's worth, and a bond is posted to remove the panels so that this is not a permanent change of the region. But as far as the bees go, you have about 400 acres of agricultural land currently, a little more than 400 acres of agricultural land within a mile of this 10-acre project that we're talking about. A study has been conducted looking at pollinator mixes, and Daniel, you might actually be.
Yeah, so this study was conducted by NREL and the Argon Laboratory, both funded by the Department of Energy, and released in 2018, and it just speaks to the benefit of using a pollinator mix for the solar array. And so basically, it fosters obviously pollinator activity that can benefit agricultural land that's within a mile radius of the array, and also help to rejuvenate native bee colonies as well.
It's effectively a wildflower mix that provides a lot of pollen for bees to live in and buzz around and collect pollen and go back to their hive, and then also go around to the surrounding areas and impact the crops and the things in that region. So if you'd walk by it, it would look like a field of wildflowers with some arrays up above it and a bunch of bees buzzing around underneath it. That's what we mean by pollinator mix. And we don't have to mow it throughout the year, we'll mow it once at the end of the year, so there won't be noise from mowing happening either.
All right, thanks. Is that good?
No, not really. Have you guys gone up the street to see the apiary that's been there for many years that has multiple millions of bees?
No, I haven't, that's cool though.
Yeah, it is, but how can bees feed when you cover their soil with glass? So you're going to cover up 10 acres of farmland that's pollinated by the bees in this area, that they make their livelihood also transporting bees to pollinate squash props, corn? If you bring bees.
The vegetation's totally available to them, it's not covered.
Oh, really? Because from the pictures, to me, it looks like it's covered.
On the plan, you'll see there's 15 feet between panels. The panels are at a maximum of six feet tall, and then there's about a 15-foot space between each row.
My only concern is the plan we saw for Cumberland Farms is completely different than what we got right now, as far as the approach and how the land was going to be handled. And then the other thing is it's 10 acres or larger, constitutes a large complex, but if we're only 9.85, I get that, but what if we go to another 9.85, and then another 9.85, and now I become in a butter as well? To me, it doesn't make sense for the town to allow this to go in. As somebody who's new to the area but also hunted that area for the last 20 years, I'm familiar with the land, I'm familiar with the environment, and now you want to fence off 12 acres of land, that just doesn't make any sense to me. And I get it if you're here and you make money and you have your studies that are good in Virginia and they're good in all these other states and counties, but you didn't, you don't live in this community. Your children don't go to school here, and you don't plan to retire here and stay here. You know, unfortunately, I only had an hour to look at this, and what I saw right here makes me disgusted to see it. And I just hope and pray that you take your time to really look at this and evaluate it. Sorry, I wish I had more time and was aware because I would have prepared more for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the, in this package, are there any photos that look like what you're proposing? Because most of these are not, they're 10 megawatts and they're this and that, so I'm not sure you did yourselves a favor here.
There's a 2.2 megawatt on page four, and then on page.
With a grass between it and things?
No, that doesn't, that doesn't have a full rendering of it. We didn't have a full photo of this one, we're, this is one we're putting up in here, and we don't have a full photo of that, but I can find one, try to find a smaller one. By providing the five megawatt, you know, we were wanting to show just sort of how the panels were laid out and arrayed.
Was that one?
That's on page five. That's the Summers, Connecticut project. So it's larger than what this will actually look like, significantly larger.
But I think a lot of us have that question, what will it look like with the high grasses and with the, you know, the hedge around it? Be nice to know. The question came up about how long these, the trees around the fence, if they start out at four feet, how long till they get to be eight or 10 or 14 feet?
They grow about 12 to 18 inches a year.
12 inches a year?
12 to 18 inches, yeah.
From four feet to eight feet is four years.
Four to six feet is the height that they'll be installed, so that's the range that the nursery gave us in terms of available sizes, so they'll be four to six feet.
And then, yeah, so it would be probably about five years until they're 12, 14 feet tall.
Wow.
But again, I mean, it's installed, they'll almost fully cover the fence, and, you know, from there, it's just the back of the array that will be exposed, and that's, I mean, the back of the array is approximately half a mile from Set Right Road.
Is anybody here from the owner of the property? Does anybody like to talk about? I just feel like this comes up a lot about farmland becoming solar, and as we mentioned, some farmland can become houses, and some farmland becomes other things. And if this is not an APR or a land trust, you know, it's all risky. Because I think that's one thing certainly in Deerfield we all appreciate is the farmland. But I've been hearing from a lot of farmers who are having a hard time making ends meet with just farming, so I just invite that, but.
Yeah, on that note, the one thing, and I don't mean to in any way provoke an argument, but if those are four buildable lots across from Set Right Road, that would be a visual screen against this backdrop automatically. So this is in some ways a way to secure against that if people would not want to build there. This would be a very quiet neighborhood, it would not increase any traffic. But if houses are built across the way on Set Right Road, that's a visual impact on that Vista already as well.
I'm happy to talk a little bit about the real estate value analysis too, if that's, you know.
You know, I see you've included that, and I'm sure, I'm sure if you read it, it makes sense, but someone else might come up with another thing too. But I appreciate, because we did ask for that, so I appreciate you putting that in there.
I'd like to just make a follow-up comment on your statement about farming, the financial situation there. What we've seen on several of these that have been done on ag land is this is where the landowner can divert a portion of their property into something that produces a reliable income for a certain period. And then that allows them to hold the rest of their land and keep that in farming and basically keep the whole thing going. And many of them have said that without that, it's probably just a matter of time before they're out, so.
It was mentioned by the landowner who's here, but didn't desire to speak right now in front of everybody, that one option that he has considered that this would preclude him from doing is selling the rest of it for development otherwise. You know, we're talking here about a 10-acre portion of a 50-acre set of parcels that is quite small, quite quiet, one truck a month to maintain it and make sure it works as compared to any other form of development on it that could produce significantly more noise and hassle. We've designed it in, you know, in line with the bylaws, it would be classified as a large-scale ground-mounted solar project, which is within the confines of residential agricultural property. So we're not seeking a variance to do something that the town has not somewhat indicated an interest in having done on these. So that's, you know, that's one of the first things we look at when we try to cite these projects in the state is places that are allowable by a special permit, which this does fit within how the bylaw has been written. Based on, as I understand, the Energy Committee work to try to foster that, and we're not building an extra-large scale, this is what's allowed within this area.
Right. All right, anybody else? We have a new one, and then you come afterwards, yeah.
I know she's on here. I'm Karen Murphy, and I don't live on Set Right, I don't border any of this, I just found about, found out about this today. I grew up in South Deerfield and I left about 40 years ago, and I've been looking for property in this area. And most recently, about three months ago, I purchased a home on Plain Road, which is a good distance away from where this project is going to be. And I don't know about engineering, I just heard about these plans today. What I do understand, though, is what it's like to grow up in a community that takes aesthetics into consideration, and the views that I have in this home that I just purchased, along with many other people, I think almost 180 degrees circumference, half a circumference around where this is going to be built, are kind of sloped up. And one of the things that drew me to this house was being able to look outdoors in the front, the back, the side, and see plains and fields and corn and potatoes and Sugarloaf Mountain and wonderful mountains all around, and my view would be incredibly disrupted, and I'm a good distance away. And I can honestly say if I knew this project was coming along three months ago, I wouldn't have bought the home that I bought, because clearly it's going to devalue the homes around there. And what it's going to do to the views, to the surrounding area, and it's just devastating to me. And again, I, like I said, I just bought this home, and I was looking for something just like it in the country, where I could enjoy retiring and have a view and have my grandkids over and have people come over and go sledding and enjoy this great community and the wonderful neighbors I've met. And I suspect that a number of the neighbors that I live around aren't aware of this either, because this project is going to affect LeRoi, LeRode, Sawmill Plain, it's going to affect a lot of people and homes. Had I known about it, like I said, sooner, not sure what I would have done, but I would hope that there's a lot of consideration that goes into the, what the community is about, and how particularly important it is to try and maintain the country and the beauty of it. And that's kind of all I have to say, so thank you.
Thanks.
I'm David, decision 33 Set Right Road. Again, there's been a lot of work done in the presentation of this package to the board and the application of this special permit. And I, we get sometimes lost in the details and the specifics that we're concerned if this project goes in, but there's still a process that needs to be undertaken, and that's the special permit process, which requires you as the board, and I know you know what you're doing, I know you know the law, but I still think it's important to reiterate that you have to make a finding that this project, as proposed by this company, that the benefits outweigh the detriments to the community and the neighborhood. And you've listed specifically, the town has passed and charged you with adhering to the review criteria that's in the bylaws, and that includes the social and economic and community needs. And I mentioned this last time, and I want to reiterate it again because I've heard the same mantra that I heard before, that we have the generic statement that there's going to be 300 homes serviced by this over time. There's no direct impact to this community, there's no urgent need for this type of energy generation in this community. What they have provided you in their application is simply solar speak, a blanket statement that does not take into account any of the particulars of our community, and in particular, my neighborhood. And you've heard very passionately from some of the folks that are much farther removed than I am from this about the impact that it has on their quality of life and their commitment to the town and the community. So that's one of the factors that I think this application is woefully inadequate when it deals with section. So that's one of the factors that I think this application is woefully inadequate when it deals with section 5321 is that they have not demonstrated to you that the burden of this project is outweighed by the benefit. We also have for you to consider the adequacy of public services. And tonight you, we, we did get some information from the DPW that said that they could plow this. But you also mentioned that, oh, they're going to improve this road. But if you look at the extension, that 400 feet of extension between the end of the pavement at Set Right Road, where it ends now and their access road to this proposed facility, what you'll see when you drive on that particular piece of, uh, of road is a road that it, it almost immediately slopes off to the west from four to six to eight feet down. It's a bank and on the west side, it's a bank up four or five feet. To widen that road, to do anything to improve it other than the one car path road that it is now is going to require, I'm assuming, uh, something more than just simply putting down eight to 10 inches of gravel. If they truly want to make it passable and serviceable, uh, for, for anything more than it is right now, which is simply a farmer. And the superintendent of the Department of Public Works didn't talk to, or didn't present you with any information about the cost. And one of the things you have to weigh as part of this project is the cost to the town. There's been no cost, but certainly no cost figures, but certainly there is a cost, the wear and tear on the, uh, the equipment, the cost of salaries to do that further, uh, how are they going to turn around? And, uh, and so there, there is, there is an, an aspect to this regarding costs that, that hasn't been met in, in section 5323. The public services may be adequate, but they're borderline. Finally, and most importantly, the, uh, the neighborhood character and the, uh, the social structures. And I think this is where we really have a problem. This, uh, this development, this proposal is completely out of character for the neighborhood. It, uh, it has been, as, as my neighbors have tested, as it's spoken, it has been not for, I don't know how long, but for centuries, this has been farm agricultural wide open space. Um, it has been residential and the, and it's not just that, um, that we have the change in the character of the land, but you also, and you are, you are authorized to do so. You're, you're, you're actually allowed to consider not just what the current use of the land is, but what the future uses of this land may be and the benefit to the town. And certainly with four building lots there, uh, you have, you can consider that as well. The impact it would have on those, the sale of those lots and the impact it would have on the value of those lots and the benefit to the town. And finally, um, we, we heard about the proposed fiscal impact on the town and, and it's a great figure to hear. As, as certainly as members of a, of a town board, you love to hear the increase in the, in, in the bottom line and what, what is this going to be for the town coffers? And you hear this, this wonderful figure of, of $500,000. It's $25,000 over the course of a 20-year lifespan and there's no factor for inflation in that. That's peanuts. Peanuts because of what they're proposing to do to this land, this agricultural land. It's, it, it is, um, the, the project as it is, the $25,000 does not make up for what the, the scouring that's going to occur on our, our agricultural land and the fact that these solar panels will constitute a blight on the visual, um, character of our community. It's just not worth the cost. You know, we, we, uh, we also heard, and we, we also heard, I think the last testimony was that these are going to be payment in lieu of taxes, which is nothing more than a gift. There's no guarantee. So I don't know if that's been solidified or not. We had some in, in, innuendo tonight that maybe there was going to be some tax benefit. But last week, last month, we heard payment in lieu or in-kind appropriations. That's no guarantee that that's going to continue. So the special permitting process needs to stand for something more than the parties just putting together an application that looks pretty on the outside, has a catchy phrase name that, that pulls on the heartstrings of the folks that, that grew up here and, and, and uses the word frontier in it. It needs to be something more than just a pro forma, uh, application that complies with the minimum requirements of the bylaws. And I don't think this application has done so. They, they have done a lot of the specific legwork. They've done some nice studies. They've provided you with a lot of detailed information. But they have failed on the overall, uh, presentation when it comes to the requirements that you are required to consider, consider to weigh the bet, the benefit versus the detriment. And, um, you have a lot of discretion and, uh, you know, special permit is not something that is a right to anybody and you have a lot of discretion. And, and that discretion is something that you should exercise, even if you can do it. Even if this project fits within the parameters, doesn't mean you have to grant it. As long as your decision is supported by the law, as long as it's not arbitrary, capricious or whimsical, you can deny this. And I think the community members have spoken loud and clear about how detrimental this is to the nature and character of the community. And these folks have not spoken to the benefit and the needs of this community for a project like this. So in light of the application's failure to meet your review criteria, I would hope that you would be convinced that this project does not warrant the granting of a special permit and has not met the minimum standards of review under that criteria. And I hope that, uh, when you review this in its totality, that you have, uh, you have the ability, the confidence and the strength to determine this permit should not be allowed and it should be denied because it doesn't meet the criteria that the town has set to establish, to, to approve something like this. I also have something too that's a little less pleasant. And then I'll be done, Mr. Wade.
No, public hearing.
Prior to the last hearing, um, I was sitting in the audience and I overheard a conversation with one of the board members and my neighbor. And it took, it was taken aback by it because it seemed predisposed that, um, the member was, uh, speaking in behalf of this project without even the opening of the public hearing. And I think, uh, that, uh, that would require a recusal. Members of this community have the right to do one of two things. They, when they serve on a board, they have the right to partake and act on that board as a voting member, being an impartial member of that board to receive the information and make a ruling. Or they abdicate that authority and they become a private citizen that can speak out on behalf. Mr. Camosa, you had a conversation with my neighbors where you were very, when I had to make a comment that says, I hope that's not the case because then why are we even having a public hearing? I would hope that at that, in light of that, in light of my request, that you recuse yourself from any vote going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I did have one question about, um, you would, I, I believe you had mentioned at the, the last meeting, the potential of having a community solar project. Because that, that, that is so, first of all, I, I'd also like to remind the residents of Deerfield that we voted on, on solar bylaws a few years ago and it was pretty much because we wanted to allow solar, both, uh, residential at people's homes, so we have a bylaw for that, um, large scale, which is two megawatts or less, and extra-large, which is up to six megawatts. And, and we voted some bylaws for that and, and I, I believe we, we did that because we thought that, uh, alternative energy is a good thing. So I just want to remind people of that. Having, so having said that, um, the benefits to the community. So 300 homes powered is, is, to me, that's important. Um, if they were 300 homes in Deerfield, maybe that's more important to people in Deerfield. I, you know, with all of our personal things, I, you know, 300 homes anywhere is, is useful, I would, I would think. So have you talked about any more community?
Yeah.
Solar and how it can benefit the community more?
The community solar, uh, is, is definitely an aspect of this that, that could work, that we, we can go out to, to people and connect them to a listserv to, to sign up and purchase the power from this. We, we can definitely allow that.
Yeah, I mean, sir, there's a lot of optionality once we get into the SMART program and community solar is one of those, um, one of those pieces. Also looking at a, um, public entity offtaker. So if the town wanted to purchase some of the energy as well, these are all options that are available, um, that we would love to, um, you know, entertain that conversation when the time comes. But it's, for now, it's, you know, it's getting the special permit and, um, and the SMART program does have some, there's some incentive there.
The incentivized community solar.
Community solar. So it's, it would be mutually beneficial for, you know, for us to pursue that.
And I, I don't know all the rules and regs on that, but if you sign up, do you get a lower electricity rate? Would, 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 uh,
It's, yeah.
Residents of Deerfield benefit financially or not necessarily?
Yeah, I mean, typically people wouldn't really, won't sign up if it wasn't a deal. So, yeah, typically rates are, um, at or below, um, what you would be paying currently on your, um, on your bill.
But you're saying would have to, you, you're, you're looking for approval before you would commit to that?
Before we finally know and are able to, to mark it, yes, because we need to secure a spot in the, the SMART queue that's launching coming up.
Yeah, cause we, I mean, we would need to ensure that there's local demand for the electricity. So there, I mean, there's some steps down the road that we would love to pursue, but yeah.
And again, that's incentivized on, on our end and, um, that's, that's the plan that we have for, for going this way. I wonder if we, we could just also make a quick comment on, on the pilot agreement?
Yeah.
That it, it is a formal binding contract that is not a, a gift. It's a, it's a fully, um, state-backed, um, contract that we, we agree to pay a rate.
It's not, it's not meant to be a negotiation for reduction in taxes paid at all. And there actually is a 2%. So basically how it works is you estimate the, um, the amount of tax that would be paid over the life of the project, using a 2% inflation adjuster each year, um, under traditional methods. And, um, it's to the benefit, um, both us and the town to lock a, a given dollar value in that's not below the total amount of tax that would be paid under traditional methods. So, um, so we're not, it's not a negotiated reduction. It's just simply fixing the, um,
It's a fixed cash flow.
Fixing the payment.
And I believe we did this with the, the one up on the quarry.
Yeah.
We did.
And so we've, we've, we're following that precedent that was, um, established there. Yeah.
And to answer your question earlier, John, that the town of Deerfield has entered into a, a community aggregation contract that every resident will, uh, participate in. And actually, once you get notified, you'll have to, each individual in town will have to opt out of this if they don't want to participate. And one of their, uh, this company's main aggregations, they go after solar projects. Not necessarily this one, but they go after all types of solar projects.
So you already have finished a tie into the grid that exists here already, so they're not going to like?
We're, we're waiting on the, the final, uh, impact statement from them, the system impact study. We're almost completed with the system impact study. We've applied. They, they have all the information. They're conducting the study. So we have authorization to interconnect based on what we hear the upgrade costs will be when those get back to us in the next couple of weeks. It, Eversource takes their, takes their time, um, doing things. So.
And then your connector, it doesn't, your wires that are going to connect the solar panels to the grid, they don't go down your access road? Do you have an easement down that?
I do. Yeah, that was, it, it was a little extra long and we were worried about having to get an, an easement along the town's roadway to be able to run along Set Right Road and also trenching and, and disturbing neighbors there. So we were able to get an access along the southern parcel, um, there so that we can, we can run there and keep the distance shorter and lower impact on everybody.
So I just want to talk about a procedural thing. Um, this is site plan, special permit and stormwater. Well, the planning board, our, our history is that we hire a, a peer review person to make sure we're doing all the technical things correctly. And if we need anybody to review the stormwater or anything else, we, we would hire peer review. So given the fact that it is, there's a lot of items in our bylaws that we have to make sure we're, uh, we're looking at properly, I would recommend that we, we do enlist a peer review, at least for the administrative review of this. Set sound?
Stormwater for sure.
And then stormwater is a bunch of calculations that I can't read them and I'd like to have someone go over it and, you know, so now we have, uh, back in August, we didn't have all the information. Now we do, so we could have that.
That's spelled out in the bylaws. So that's, that's why we are not surprised by that.
All right. So, yeah, so what we'd probably like to do is have Pat do the kind of, Pat, you got the administrative, technical review kind of ver- to get, to make.
We'll have to clarify what you mean by that. I mean, cause there's different levels. Like I need to say, oh, check they've done this and this, this, both through the entire bylaws and regulations and ensure.
Well, like we did last week, I mean, what have you met? What haven't you met?
Right.
What have you partially met? Um, so we need to go through that. And then when you get to some of the technical things, like the groundwater and all those kind of things and the, the stormwater runoff, then we'd have a technical, which is getting a little more difficult apparently to get someone. But I think the ConCon did get someone for, uh, that other project, so.
They did. That was the main reason I asked, is the, the schedule.
Yeah.
The effect that'll have on schedule.
Yeah. So, um, I, we have sort of a list of people that, um, you know, we've kind of vetted by the town, so we, we don't have to put it out and take a long time getting someone. But it might take us two weeks to get someone, two weeks to look at it. So we're, we're talking at least another, probably another month. Okay? Yep. Yep, another comment?
Do I have to say my name again?
Nope, you're all set.
I have a question when you brought up the community solar. That's, that's a whole separate issue. And if you're, are you familiar with how they work and how they act?
Who?
I'm asking, I'm putting it out to anybody, cause I am. Could you tell us the price per kilowatt installed? That's going to benefit residents in this community?
We've not conducted that analysis yet.
Then how can you make an assumption and assume that that's going to benefit us when you're just looking for your stamp to get your approval? I am familiar with it. It's different per every household. It's different per what every consumer uses for how many kilowatts that's on their bill. I wanted solar. Solar's a wonderful thing, but what you're proposing is not a good fit. And I urge you, that's a totally separate issue. We're here on just the solar farm, not on community solar. That's completely different. And a lot of times when you go with an independent contractor, it's actually quite a bit cheaper for the consumers to be able to choose when you go to open market versus putting it out to bid. But we already have mass solar. We have interest-free loans through local banks and we have some of the best solar accesses to, excuse me, I lost my train of thought, but financial resources in the state. And I think what we're proposing is two completely different things. And we're, we have a hurricane coming tomorrow. You know, we have a dirt road that they're asking for, for an eighth of a mile extension that the town's going to maintain with just gravel. What do you think's going to happen with two to four inches of groundwater run down off the mountain from Conway down through my yard? Because I'm not in a butter, just because I can see it though, makes me a visual of a butter. That's going to be devastating. And I understand we're going to go and put grass in there that's good for bees, but we, right now, what we do is we do crop management. We rotate what's good for the soil. We do multiple different crops, multiple different times of the season. And what we're proposing is to take a piece of land and make it stagnant. That's not going to do anything to feed any families for the next 20 to 30 years. Thank you.
All right. So I would, uh, propose that. Sure.
All right. I promise I'll be quick. I just have one, one request I get, I guess, before anybody goes and votes and anybody does this. Cause somebody brought up something earlier that, that kind of was a aha. And that is, if you want to think about what this looks like to the community, then go up on top of Mount Sugarloaf and look northwest. And this thing is going to be plopped right in the middle of a whole bunch of rolling farm fields. And this thing is going to just be a nice big glare. I don't care how big your seeders get. You're going to see this thing from Sugarloaf and that's what people are going to see. It's not just Set Right. It's not just plain or league. This is standing up on Sugarloaf and representing what Deerfield now looks like. In the middle of your farm fields, you got a 10-acre solar panel.
So I think we'd, um, I think we keep the public hearing open so that we can, um, hear, right? Cause then when we do the peer review, we need to hear from the peer review people, which might be new information, which needs to come up. So, um, so I would, uh, propose we do that. I, I appreciate everybody talking and I, I think the main, the, the main issue I'm hearing is site and the visual aspect of it. Seems like we're kind of addressing a lot of the other things, burying the lines and, um, I don't know, a host of other things. So the site thing keeps coming back. Um, so we hear that. I've got a lot to say, but I don't, we'll, we'll do it next, next time, I guess. I, I, I guess part of it is, is I wish we could see what it's going to look like because I, I, I just tell you, I don't know if people have seen a 10-acre, six-foot-high, six to eight-foot-high panels that have grass in between them and hedges around them because the, the ones I see don't look that horrible. I just got to say that.
We can, we can work with.
So I think it'd be really helpful if you brought something that gave us that.
We'll, we'll do a visual. We'll, we'll do a visual, a full visual rendering of it.
And I'd ask the neighbors to do the same thing and see what you come up with.
We'll do a visual rendering of it, so we'll submit a plan and, with somebody with, I don't know the exact program, but we'll do a few different photos and then have them populate those photos with the, with the panels and what it, what it will look like.
And, I mean, people mentioned, and people can see it from, you know, all over, and I'm, I'm not sure if that's true or not, it, it might be, if it is, we should know that, but there are, there are a lot of these around the state and the country right now.
We'll, we'll do visual renderings and bring those in at different points with different heights of trees on them.
All right, great.
And the process for getting the external review, or you guys will find somebody, and then do we post some initial funding that you use for that?
Yeah, so that's the thing, we need to get a quote so that you can then put some money up, and then they can do the work.
Okay.
So, again, I think we can probably get, well, we can do that with Pat tomorrow, probably. Yeah, all right, so we'll know that one, and then, again, from this list of other people we have, hopefully we can get someone, and I think it's really the stormwater report to go over. This was, the Concom already did.
The Concom already approved it effectively, yes.
It was an RDA, so there's no stormwater.
Outside of jurisdiction, I presume, so they wouldn't.
Right, so they didn't do, they didn't do a study on it, that's why, that's why.
Stormwater realtor's gonna fire on this.
Right.
And then I think we should check again with the DPW about that road, is that what you were suggesting?
Yeah, the road, yeah, and I would, I would love that to be part of the engineering report so that we had a real sense for what that, like, post-enhancement management.
Maintenance, because, right, they've got the instruction of it here, or the upgrade of it.
Are we able, and I'm not sure exactly how it works with you guys, but to, to take on the maintenance of that portion of the road, is that something that we can, we can do with you guys?
We're happy to write that into our operations and maintenance plan.
Yeah, into the operations and maintenance, we don't, we don't want you guys stuck with something that is a, you know, a liability, we're happy to maintain that.
Well, that's why I think we should get the, the DPW.
I think you have something the town needs to address, not us.
Right.
We're not trying to get you stuck with the road maintenance.
That's the thing, it hasn't been used, so no one's gonna use it except for you, so the town's not gonna pay to fix it just for you.
Right.
But we'd have to get that kind of writing or something.
We just want a building permit away from having to, you know, somebody wants to do a house out there.
Somebody's gonna, wait, wait, wait.
Oh, that's true.
I don't wanna speak, but I think a lot of times that's like, it's a town road, but it's unmaintained, and if you were gonna do something with it, you have to bring it up to specs, I believe that's what they used to do in the past, but I'm not speaking for the town, but I think when there's a project, I know, but he's speaking what he thinks he knows, and I'm speaking what I think I know, so I think it has to be upgraded if you're gonna pull a building permit and it was not maintained, I think you have to bring it up to standards.
But that could be a separate condition.
Right, right, it's something the town needs to address, not us, somebody that really knows what they're talking about.
All right, so do I have a motion to, okay, before we do that, we have to look at the calendars again. We do ask for a computerized copy of it, do we have the whole report on?
Yeah, we can send a PDF.
You can send a PDF and everything?
Yeah. So we can put it up on the website?
And there'll be a copy here, too, we'll leave a copy here.
And there's, are those the same, are they the same thing?
Yes.
The site plans?
Yes.
So we can leave the site plans up, up on the back there, too, there's a bigger, bigger plan?
Do you know how long that road was? Can I ask you, how long was from the end of Set Right that's maintained to your access road?
Yeah, 450, 500 feet, yeah.
Okay, I was looking at my calendar.
So we're, we have a scheduled meeting, Planning Board, October 1st, but that's too soon, and then our, our next meeting?
Is the 8th.
Because it couldn't be the 5th, because voting is the next day, we can't use this building.
We can't use the 12th, because that's Veterans Day. We could go to the 19th. The 19th should give everybody plenty of time to do that.
That's a lot of time.
Date did you have for October?
Oh, sorry, you're right, I'm in the wrong month. Take it back, the 8th is Columbus Day, so we're going the 1st.
We're doing the 1st, so then, that's the thing, if we wanted to do two in October, we could go to the 22nd or the 29th.
That's what you're talking about, okay. Well, I think the 29th makes more sense.
One, two, three, four, 5th, it's the 5th Monday of the month.
Yep.
Can't have a meeting because no one schedules things script.
Right, no, that's why it's free, because nobody schedules anything.
Could be a good one. Sound good for you guys?
It's works for me.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, it's a Monday, the last Monday of October. So then we'd meet on the 1st and then the 29th.
What's the 18th, what time, does that mean, sorry, John?
Do we do it?
Eighteen, I mean, the 1st.
First is our regular Planning Board meeting, seven o'clock, yeah. But that's too early to have these guys back.
No, I understand, I just, I just wanna know the time, so.
Yep, 7:00.
Be on time.
The meeting that you weren't at that we thought you were at, we had it wrong tonight, too, so, there's a few of those, just these.
So that 29th looks good, all right. Does that work for you guys?
Yes.
All right, so let's shoot for October 29th, and in the meantime, we'll get a, we'll let you know who the engineer is and they'll get the review, but if you can send us these electronically, all the plans, that'd be great.
So I move that we, I move that we continue this hearing, the public, I move that we can, that continue the public hearing to, what did I just say, 29th of September?
Seven o'clock.
October, that's what I meant, October 29th at 7:00. I moved that, anybody second?
I'll second it.
Kip, seconds? Hi.
So thank you, if you can tell people, we don't send other, we don't send other mailings, but.
Right.
So the 29th of October, 7:00 here, and we'll continue this public hearing. Thank you very much for everybody coming, and thanks for your patience.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I've got my card in the back that I can.
One, two, three, four, five.
Thank you.
How many of those copies do we? I was circulating, still use permit for 2,706 square foot boardroom bed and breakfast to be owned, owner occupied and in compliance with all building health and fire codes. Do we have any?
I, I don't really, I don't really have a problem with it, but it's important that the ZBA issue it to the, excuse me, to the property owners and not to the property, because if they issue it to that location, it's good forever.
Ah, good.
And we've had some issues on River Road where bed and breakfasts have been turned into other types of facilities, so.
So they should issue special permit?
Just to the owner.
To the owners.
To the owner, not to the, not change it, not a use permit to the, to the, to the
Yes.
The zoning board does.
Is there any other business not reasonably anticipated? So, my only quick thing, I might not be able to attend the November 8th meeting, which is the one scheduled for continuation of the Dollar General, and given, given the fact that.
That we all have to be there.
That so many people have to be there, and we didn't check with them.
That wasn't November 8th.
November 8th.
November 8th is the 100 railroad.
And?
Both?
Yeah.
I didn't have one from November 8th.
That was, yeah, well, because you know why, when you, we were looking at the 12th.
Oh, yeah.
But the 12th is Veterans Day, so we can't do it at 12th.
8th is a Thursday, and you weren't here, and we don't know if you could make it either.
That's a Thursday.
That's Thursday?
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was a Monday or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the railroad, railroad.
And you can't, or what they work for you?
Also Dollar General?
We had also continued Dollar General today, I'm pretty sure.
Not bring that file with me, so I definitely have to check that.
I also have different notebooks, but I think.
We know how to clear a room, look at this.
So anyway, I just, let me just put that out there, and we can think about it over the next week or so, and then on our October 1st meeting, if we need to change the date, we can. So do you have something else, Wendy, for us?
I'm just wondering if you saw the letter from Attorney Costa that I sent you about Cumberland Farms?
I did not, is it in our box?
No, I just, I got it late, earlier tonight, and I sent it on to you.
I did not look at email since noon time, so, no.
Okay, all right, because there's talk about issuing a temporary occupancy permit, and I have real questions about that, about the safety of doing that, and before the access is completed, which was a condition of the permit.
So let me ask the Planning Board, because I, because I was down here a week ago or so and was consulted on this, and I said that the Planning Board issued, approved the site plan review based on the entrance and exit off of Route 5 and 10.
Right.
And that we would not have approved that if it didn't exist. So, apparently, the building inspector can issue a temporary certificate of occupancy if, if they believe that it's gonna be completed in a short period of time.
Well, there's more to it, and I'll.
I, again, just said, I was, I was only speaking as myself, one person in the Planning Board, so I'm bringing it to you, but I think we can at least advise our building inspector that we.
Well, I'll, I'll give you a copy of the letter, but, and if you have something to say, I would welcome that, but my understanding is that it's not uncommon to issue a temporary occupancy permit for a project when it's a smaller item, and it's usually something like landscaping, but when it's something like, a safety issue like that, that's not normally done, and so, you know, I'm just bringing that forward because it concerns me, and, and I.
So what power does the Planning Board have, I guess?
Well, one of the things.
I was told in front of many people that he would not issue a temporary.
Well, I, I hear that there's a meeting to discuss it again, so.
What's their problem?
I'm sorry?
What's their problem?
Their problem is, they were proceeding, and it was determined, Mark Stinson, who's our, the DEP person that we work with, went by and saw some violations and closed the project down, and they've got to address those, and they are addressing those, but, you know, they have a project, they have deadlines, and it's going beyond that, and it's a problem for them, and, you know.
The violations involved, the contractor didn't put up enough silt fence, and so they, they since did that, but since there was a cease and desist order, they have to go through the legal procedures to get it removed, so.
They still haven't got their curb cut?
Yeah, they did, they got their curb cut, they, they're all set to go, matter of fact, they got most of the dirt in, they just have to pour the concrete for the head walls for the pipe and.
And that would be enough, it's, it's just that they wouldn't, the, the temporary would have them not utilizing that access, that curb cut, it would be all in and out on Elm Street, so, I'll share that memo with you, so you can see that. Adam also said that he has, you know, usually advises boards to, in this kind of situation, to have some kind of rules in place that an inspector would have those boards sign off, saying, yeah, go ahead.
That they've done what there's, what we approved?
Right.
We have, that hasn't been the practice of this board, and it, it, it's the enforcement officer is usually who does it, so that would be kind of a new thing, I think, but maybe it's a good thing, Pat?
I'd just like to add briefly, I believe you did issue a stormwater permit for this Cumberland property as well, I'd have to double check on that, and I'm pretty sure it was, and the stormwater regulations require that you issue an order of completion, and I don't think we have followed up on that on projects to date, and so this might be a good place to start, Pat.
Okay.
So stormwater, the Planning Board has to do an order of completion or something.
And is there an inspection involved, and who does that?
Somebody, presumably the engineer who had done the initial review would do an appropriate part, he'd go out and determine if it had been constructed according to the plan.
All right, let's.
Do you remember who did the peer review?
We can, we can figure that out.
Okay.
I don't remember.
I'd have to go back to the records, but it's easily, easily discoverable.
No, I'd just offhand, did you know?
The lady there, can't think of her name.
Sarah Cummins?
Sarah Campbell?
Sarah Campbell.
She did, she did Cummins?
I remember her here on some things.
We've done a bunch of these, so that's why my, my brain doesn't, she might have done Sugarloaf, and I don't, I, we'll just have to go back and look.
I think there were more issues than just the silt barrier or whatever, there were some delineation issues as well, so that were the fault of the Welling Specialist.
I also just, my quick observation, I want to, we should go back to the site plan, the sign that says downtown Deerfield, is that in the right place? It's kind of further in, I'm not sure it's the most noticeable sign, and our intention was that it was noticeable.
Well, I see it, I sit at the light there all the time.
If you come that way, it depends on which way you're coming, I guess, but anyway.
I've, I've heard complaints about the sign anyways, in general.
Yeah, well, I've heard only good things, but what?
No, I, why do we need another sign? That was it, and why was the sign so small because theirs is so big?
Well, that's why I wanted to double check, because we had it on the site plan, that size, and we said it had to be just in that, so I just wanna make sure they did follow the directions, so.
I guess it looked nicer to me than what I had seen it was going to look like, so, anyway.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll work, so you'll, you'll do up, are you clear on what you're gonna do up a quote for this Set Right Road?
Yes.
And it can be less than what you had, we had discussed.
And do you want me to do that similar type of review on the Railroad Yard property, or did you want to do just a, a simple, you know, review of whether they've complied with the basic requirements?
I, I think we should start with a simple comply, because we, we don't even know how far we are gonna go with that until the usage.
Well, I was gonna say, we shouldn't do anything on that until we know.
Right, I mean, my, my initial letter was similar to what I had written on the, on the previous Lake Street development plans, you know, well, this isn't allowed under the, the, the use table, and so the, the variance application for a use variance would need to be followed up on before it would come really to your attention. So that would be the first thing that I would do, and that would be very simple, at this point.
Yeah, that'd be great to do.
At that point, and I, because I looked back at those materials today in order to remind myself, and I had filed like a three-page short letter, and I could do that similar thing with that, and then determine later if you wanted to do a further review.
So is everybody clear about that, that there's the one up at Railroad Yard, they have to get a variance before they come for a site plan, and the variance is from the ZBA, but there's a question of whether you're even allowed to ask for a variance in a?
The use variance was allowed for the Lake Street property, a similar type was allowed at that point in time, but we might, it might be, you know, to the boards, in the boards' best interest and the town's best interest to have town council revisit that question. In any case, if it were allowed, it would, that would have to be provided by the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
And they're also asking for a dimensional variance, so both of those would need to be addressed.
From ZBA, yeah, all right.
So I will go ahead and get you a quick three-letter review on that, and an estimate on a full regulatory review on this particular project, try to have both of those two by the end of the week, if.
And I'll talk to, to someone about getting a, some, a peer review for the stormwater.
Right. The other thing is that I'm gonna, I was gonna ask the administrative staff, and I have not had an ability to do that yet, to provide information on the fees paid on all these projects?
Right.
Because from what information I have, and I don't have, I don't have complete information, so it's possible that this has all been taken care of, but on each of these projects, this one today, there had been materials that had been submitted indicating a certain level of payment and it's significantly less, I think it showed that there was $350 paid, and by my calculation, the total amount paid for site plan review, special permit, and stormwater would be $6,600, so there's a significant outstanding balance, if those figures are correct.
And, and I know it was mentioned that they were waiting, the applicants are waiting for us to tell them how much it costs, so we need to do that.
On tonight's?
Tonight, and I think the Railroad Yard, if that.
Both of them appear to have been, I think they're just getting. I think they're just getting billed the $250 without the disturbance fee on top of it, which is a calculation, but they provide... The application provides a disturbed land figure from which that can be calculated.
Setrite hasn't even paid $250.
Yeah, anyway. Oh, that just reminded me. We have an A and R for Setrite that we could actually do right now. We have to do an A and R.
Okay.
Thank you. So if you all remember, they had... This was two...
Did you get one of these projects?
This is two lots.
Yes, I got one of those.
So Setrite Road is out here. This is a lot... This is... This currently is a solid boundary, so that's a lot, and that's a lot, and they want to remove that to make this all one lot.
Was that with the solar projects?
This is what... Yeah, yeah. And we had... Because otherwise, they wanted to get variances on this and that, so...
Sit back there, because it's a property. I wonder why they need to make a point of it, but it's a setback.
Yeah. Because otherwise, they would have to stop it.
Yes, I understand, yeah.
Or we could have done a variance, but we actually suggested to them do this. It's all the same owner?
Yeah.
Any issues with this?
No.
No. They paid their $250. Motion?
Motion to accept plan criticism.
Endorse?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I can write this down. Dang it.
Oh, Jesus. Max and...
Yep, Max, Kip.
John, we... I know that we spoke last time, but I was questioning the fact that when somebody comes into a field and puts solar in there, and they're pushing pilings into the ground, we consider the whole 10 acres as disturbed?
That's what we ended up going with, because it was impossible to say otherwise, and they're running tractors and equipment on the whole ground, so... But that's also why we came up with that maximum $3,000, so that... Your calculation, why would it...
That included the maximum $32.
How could it be... How could it be $6,000? You said $6,000.
SPR and special permit.
Because they're getting both site plan review and special permit, and they both have $250 plus the same disturbed land fee attached to it.
We charge them disturbed land on two different applications?
That's your fee schedule. I can read it to you. This is schedule of an administrative fee, section 3.3, site plan review, $250 basic fee, plus $10 per 1,000 square foot of land disturbance, up to a maximum of land disturbance of $3,000. So the maximum fee on that could be the $32.50. Special permit review, same thing, $250 basic fee, plus $10 per 1,000 square feet of land disturbance, up to a maximum land disturbance fee of $3,000. The stormwater permit is a $100 fee.
Let's see why we should charge them. It's just because it's a different fee. I mean, if they were separate and they didn't have to do them, I could see doing one for one and one for the other. But I don't see why we should charge them that amount.
It's certainly within the purview of the board to waive fees if you see fit.
And I'd like to go back and see what we did at the quarry, because I don't think we did both, and I think they required a... Did they require a special permit?
I'd have to go... I don't know. They got the used variance, so then they didn't have to get a special permit. They were allowed to go for it without one. So in their case, it was just site plan review and the...
So let's... I'll put that in my notes, if you remember to bring that up, and we could consider waiving that, because that's... Yeah, I don't think the intention was to...
We'll hear about it, though.
Double. Anything else?
Sign time.
Oh, sorry, sign time. Do you see a miler? Or is it at the bottom of the pile here?
I need the address of that.
All right, this is four. That's good.
Go that way.
Continuation worksheet. I forgot to have them sign.
Email, it's going to have them sent back. Maybe our signatures are fine.
We got them to do it the other night, the Railroad Yard, right?
No. Yes, but no, because we...
Oh, then we changed the data.
Wrong date. But I got the email confirmation that they would probably... I would still have them sign the form, but wait till you finalize the date. You're going to change that date.
Well, we thought we had finalized it.
Yeah, I know. Oh, here. Sign.
October 29th, we're continuing this one, too.
Is that the month we say, Mondays, we're going to, John?
Yeah.
It doesn't happen too often. We already had a month like this year.
I guess twice... Twice a year.
We don't have anything to talk about.
And we actually have... None of these public hearings are continuing.
I'm just going to say that would be a big old relief.
We could do...
Something interesting.
I'm not even sure there'll be much to update, but... So if there's not any other business, do we...
Not have the meeting?
Cancel it? I mean, I'm sure there's administrative things, but I'm sure we could also take a break.
We can, too.
We don't know until...
No, we don't know. We have to schedule it, just have a short...
Yeah. All right. Gentlemen, thank you everyone.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Somebody move to end this meeting.
I move to end the meeting.
Any second, Roger?
I'll second the motion.
Second, Kip? All in favor? Yep.
Yeah, yep. Bye. And once again...